Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Uh, sixteen, six thirty, we'll start the West Wednesday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Westminster Select Board Meeting. I ask anybody to speak to sign in. Uh, any adjustments to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to acceptance of the minutes for September fourteenth, twenty twenty two, and September nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
I made a motion for exception.
Second.
Oh.
For.
Well, sorry. September fourteenth and nineteenth.
Fourteenth and nineteenth. All right.
Kevin. Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes for September fourteenth and September nineteenth. Uh, any discussion?
I look here for fourteenth. I don't think I know.
Well, you would need to recuse yourself from the fourteenth.
Well, that minute says eleven.
That's. That's probably true, yeah.
But there would be a three zero, uh, there would be a voice count difference in the fourteenth as in the nineteenth.
That's unfortunate, I would do both again.
Yeah, we can, so.
Okay. Uh, so motion has been made and seconded to accept for September fourteen, minutes of September fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close?
Oh, same.
One of the tensions.
Thank you, Craig.
Uh, acceptance minutes, September nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
I made a motion for exception.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded to accept minutes for September nineteenth, twenty twenty two.
And I, yeah.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we're, I get twenty one, we're twenty two.
What?
Twenty one is the argument.
Oh, that's, I think, I didn't.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Without you.
I have. Communication and public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business, emergency management director discussion. Since Ben's not here, I'm assuming we'll table that this time.
Make a suggestion on that?
Yes.
Just if Ben wants to come and speak, just make it, have him let us know.
That's fine.
Thursday or Friday beforehand, so he can be on the agenda for whenever he can make it to discuss it, so it doesn't keep getting to you.
For sure.
All right.
Uh, moving on, unfinished business, B, financial position discussion, company versus in-house. Uh, we don't have it in front of us, but I forwarded a proposal from Rural Solutions, uh, to, for everybody to look over, including, um, town hall staff, and I guess at this point, I'd like to try to figure out if that's a way we want to go versus hiring somebody in-house. We would need to advertise for that. Be nice to have it in front of us, but we don't have, so that's.
Well, I sure like to have chances that we do it.
You would. I thought you all were sent it.
I did.
I haven't offered you to do it.
Oh.
You should have.
I can go down, if you want to move on, I can go downstairs and print. If you want to come back to it. I just got to find it and print it off for you, it's a proposal that.
That's, yeah, let's do that.
Do I do that?
If you don't, if you don't mind.
I don't, I'll do it right back.
Uh, so we're going to hold off on B for the moment. And we're going to go to C, FEMA fire department, uh, reimbursement discussion. I think that's you.
That's me. So, in my efforts to try to find out how our emergency management, our emergency services personnel can be reimbursed in the event of another natural disaster that involves FEMA because they're volunteers. I'm still waiting for feedback on a bunch, from a bunch of people. Um, Jessica Roderick, federal FEMA representative, I think that's her, that's her title. She recommended creating a labor policy. Um, the details of that labor policy, I'm still trying to get info on, so I, we won't discuss that. But she did say that from what the fire department had submitted in terms of equipment, which they can be reimbursed for, they had, FEMA had sent a check for forty-eight and a half equipment hours totaling four thousand seventy-three dollars and seventy-three cents to the state, um, of which the state takes two and a half percent and then sends the rest down to us. Um, I haven't been able to track that yet. Um, and find out exactly where it is, where she says we've received it. Actual numbers, I don't know. Um, but it would appear that we've been reimbursed for some of the fire department's equipment hours and we owe them money. You owe the town, you owe the. Fire district. Other, okay. Because the town received FEMA funds. Okay. So we would owe the fire district. Okay. Some, sum of money. The exact sum, I do not know yet. I will by the next meeting.
Great.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any discussion on, uh, FEMA fire department reimbursement at this time? Keep, uh, do you want to keep that on the agenda for next time?
Yes.
Will you keep it? All right, um, we can move on to, uh, new business and come back to financial position at this time. Uh, moving on to new business, A, Sheriff, uh, Mark Anderson's here. Uh, believe everybody has an email chain. Uh, so we ask you to come in and, uh, kind of go over services and what we feel is lack of services at times and, uh, some billing questions, just how, how things work. I, I read an article in the paper yesterday about Newfane, seems like they're kind of having some similar issues, so instead of, uh, beating around, we figured.
Sure.
Well, thank you very much.
Excuse me, I'll mind if you pull on until Allison gets back, she's the one that's most familiar with the issues here.
We, we can? Yep.
Mind if some.
Yeah, let's do it. Does anybody mind if we do a cemetery deed? That's fairly quick. Uh, Kevin? You're good at that. So after jumping around.
Panelist Minister, submission for cemetery deed for Janet Paffernan and Crystal Morris. Uh, three burials, section E, road three, graves one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, in Westminster New Cemetery. Uh, witnessed and submitted for our approval this twenty-eighth day of September, two thousand twenty-two.
Uh, motions have been made and seconded for approval of a cemetery deed as written. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Motion passes. I think we need to hold off.
Right.
For the rest of it.
It's interesting, that's the word. My report.
Yeah.
So, School Street, as everybody knows, is red. Done. Paid. Um, paperwork's been submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. Basin Brothers started the project on Hickory Road today. Um, that's the USDA grant. They are wanting to close the road daily from eight o'clock, uh, AM to four o'clock PM. Um, open it up for traffic in the afternoon, evening. Um, the, um, Federal Roads Grant down on Windmill Hill, well, that cohort is in, but it's not fully completed yet. Still some clean out there in headway, or if we don't, well, it's well underway. Um, I talked with, um, the brickies on that bridge over that river by Dennis Basin there, one twenty-one.
I don't know what you're saying, Brickie, I don't know what that means.
Look at Brickie Construction, K-B-R-I-C-K-Y.
Thank you.
They stopped, they have offered us all of the material that we put in the trough overs, all the, um, dentades, orange stone when they're done. So, we should have, we got two thousand yards over here to fire, uh, for the town road. The town road, and, uh, we could use it for road base, we could refresh it, we could do all kinds of things with it. Um, Jay McDonald, uh, has given us roughly three thousand yards of white jobs from interstate. Um, we're going to have trucks starting tomorrow and Friday, delivering equipment, um, free of charge. But we also can process and train them with something usable. Um, our truck is done. Of the twelfth.
New truck.
New truck, yeah. Hopefully, there'll be another discussion on that, it's important.
We'll print. It's set up in this, a funny PDF, we'll print it, or white pages. I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion on road forming report? Yeah, yeah. Yep. Uh, we're going to circle back. Actually, let's table financial position discussion since we don't have the, um, say, unless you want me to read it out of my email, but.
Can you just put it back on? Well, I, I skimmed through it, but I didn't really relook at it.
Yep.
Nope, no, they don't have to, which, but it's not printable.
But it's the one emailed one?
Yeah.
I know, but I can release, I'm trying to say, if I go back home, I can lose me in my office off my computer.
Yep. I'll find that. I'll re, I will re-send it to everybody. Thank you.
Or I can in the morning as well. I, I'll, I'll do it, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, so we'll circle back to, uh, new business, Sheriff, Mark Anderson, um, we didn't get very far, Ally, so, at all, so if you want to.
Yeah, I understand that there's some questions to answer, uh. I, I think that there's a, a need to, to make mention that there's a discussion that occurred between myself and the town manager before town meetings about what the changes in our service would be, which was my understanding that there was going to be a discussion at town meeting about what those changes would be, and that never occurred. Now, there's a history there, you're all aware of it, but with the departure of the, the former town manager, none of that discussion occurred. I was of the understanding that the select board was aware of that discussion. So, I'm happy to answer anything and explain basically where we, where we are now in our perspective, because we moved forward with our plan along with discussions with the town of Putney, who are in, uh, last year, we were in a relationship with, uh, mutually to be able to tell benefit both towns. And I suspect some of the issues that are in this email are explained by that.
Okay.
Um, the going back, I didn't look at the full history, but going back for some time, we've maintained basically a forty-hour deputy with the town of Westminster. That's fluctuated between forty hours, thirty hours, I think at one point it was twenty hours, back up to forty hours, or back down to twenty hours a week. The last year, the discussion that I had had with, uh, the then-town manager was that we could combine forces with the town of Putney, we, uh, both towns have a forty-hour position, which, if we were on duty in either town, we would respond to either town. And so if someone's in Putney, but say there's a, a motor vehicle crash in Westminster, we would respond from Putney. So, taking advantage of realizing, uh, uh, financial as well as human resources, uh, to be able to respond to things across what would effectively be an eighty-hour week period, but you're only paying forty hours. My responsibility in that relationship was to be able to balance out to make sure that both towns got their forty hours. The part of the discussion last year was that we didn't have the personnel at the time, I had come before the board to talk about that, we're in a different position now. Uh, but at that point, we didn't, which is why we gave refunds to the town of Westminster. Uh, the, uh, because of the, the vote on the budget, uh, to support a twenty-hour-a-week position, I no longer felt I could, uh, could make that balance between Putney and Westminster to say, I'm going to make sure both towns are treated whole. So that's where we discussed saying, okay, we're going to go back to the relationship we have before, which is we'll be here twenty hours a week. We'll respond to calls when we're here, and then the state police will respond to calls when we're not here. And then Putney's just back to their forty-hour-a-week position, and they get serviced with a, a dedicated deputy. The part-time position here in Westminster, uh, I have, uh, it's roughly five, uh, full-time equivalent deputies that service my patrol towns. So, the, uh, town of Putney, uh, the town of Vernon, uh, and then through a mutual co-op through Londonderry and Jamaica, they each have a full-time person. I don't have somebody for twenty hours to, uh, meet up with Westminster, and because of that, it's blended in with the remaining, uh, full-time equivalents that we have amongst Newfane, uh, Darston, uh, and, I mean, that contract with about fifteen towns and villages. So that's why we don't have a dedicated person, uh, assigned to Westminster anymore, we could go back to that relationship, I don't think the town of Putney was opposed to to the idea and the concept that we were exploring. Uh, it just was a simple, simple reality of the, the changes in the, uh, the financial means of the contract. Um, so I think that was a conversation this board probably never heard. Uh, I think that was merely a factor of timelines, uh, because it wasn't much before town meeting. Uh, and I learned, uh, Russell's departure at town meeting, which caught me by surprise. Um, happy to answer or respond to any questions about that change, uh, if you'd like. Um,
does, does anybody else have any, any questions at this time?
Just, we were all there, I guess. My understanding was, because you owe this so much, that your contract has been twenty hours, and the other twenty hours would be making up for the building in the past, I didn't know you actually reimbursed it. See what I'm saying? That's why I thought, that's what it could be, okay? At the time, you owed us quite a bit of hours.
I don't know, Zoe, we're reimbursed, that term, it was credited.
Right.
So there was a point where you're credited hours, but then there was a point where we actually issued a refund in, in cash. So we did both, uh, in fact, there was a, a bit of confusion at year end because we had satisfied some of the hours that we had already returned the funds for.
I didn't know that, I don't know what the board did.
Uh, we, I only ever saw, uh, credited. I saw credited time or hours owed or however you want to word it, but.
I think one of the major problems we have, even we live, let's say it's twenty hours. We've got no idea when the twenty dollars, so let's just say, there's something that happens and we call Ally, we call you, and she least knew that either on a call for Tuesday or Thursday, that don't bother calling, you call the sheriff, call the state police because you're not coming. In the twenty hours, we have no idea when you're coming and when you're not coming, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct, uh, we do, part of our contract does include discussion about when we are or are not here. Um, we haven't had that discussion to this point, and if you want to have that discussion, I'm happy to. Um, with that said, the, uh, we manage the relationship between, hey, we're not in town, we'll pass you along to the state police. And so rather than have to have a, a calendar over here of whose time it is this week, and be able to check the calendar, we just try to make that as soon as transition for you.
As it were.
Um, just, just one of the examples, I didn't, I'm not going to get into the why I called. Um, but to call and to have a room full of females downstairs and there's a fellow videotaping us. Um, we were dispatched, we did the call first thing in the morning, uh, when we got in here, that there was a person outside that we weren't comfortable with, and the sheriff wasn't on until eleven. So the, the dispatcher at the sheriff's department sent me to the Vermont State Police, Vermont State Police couldn't get here until that person was gone. What upset us, I think, what bothered us the most is that there was no check-in to make sure, how did that go? After we called in. Um, and looking into my own personal, why I, I carried it further because it, it was bothersome to me about this person. We weren't, weren't to engage at all, he had a, he had a um, reputation with the state police already. So it's just things like that, we don't need to be babysat, but if we call and you're not on till eleven, give us a jingle and see how we are.
Right, especially when the state police don't respond either.
Right, well, they did respond, but it was a while later. Um, you know, and come to find out we had no right to ask him to move his vehicle unless he was there for twenty minutes. And he was packed in our spots. You know, so, I mean, it's just, it's just things like that, I guess, that really.
Like a, you know, no, no call, no show, no, like that kind, that kind of thing, you know what I mean? You put a call in, or we had one was it last week? We had an incident, we were told we were over our twenty hours. And then two days later, there, I, I don't know who it is, I'm just going to use the term, there was a sheriff's car on Route Five patrolling two days later, so are we over the hours or are we not? I, I don't.
And even that afternoon, a sheriff drove by me on Route Five after saying we were over our hours and they couldn't come, so that's not to say they weren't going to Rockingham or anything, I don't know, but that, that was half an hour, forty-five minutes from that phone conversation, so the sheriff wasn't far away. And it's those situations that make you feel like, well, can you take five hours from next week and put it towards this week to respond to a call when there's a concern?
So we've actually been doing that, and right now, part of the problem that we have, um, the we should be providing roughly twenty hours on average a week to Westminster, and since July first, we've been providing roughly thirty-three point nine. So there comes a point where I have to say,
Right.
we need to scale this back because by January first, I'm going to say, we're not coming, and you're going to say, we have a contract, and I'm going to say, we spent the money, I'm sorry. So there has to be either some form of uh, curtailing of the use of that resource, but we've been trying to respond to the demands based on what was previously experienced by the town. Uh, I mean, we've been receiving a variety of complaints about a variety of things, and we try to be attentive to all of them. Um, I'm not going to say we're going to get everything a hundred percent right. I would imagine, and in the case of, uh, of the protester, um, we know who he is, uh, and he, um, we, he, he works to engage people to try to bring you into constitutional violations, uh, which could present lawsuit liability, uh, more familiar, uh, but in that situation, the reason why we wouldn't respond is because the state police were. And so if you want to spend your funds that we're already overusing to respond to the same thing where we're going to say, don't do anything. The best thing to do is let him be, leave on his own.
Okay, but, so I'm just going to bring that back just a second, so if, if they're on at eleven o'clock for Westminster, eleven AM in the morning, it's going to cost the, them, it's going to cost us money for that sheriff just to check in with us?
No, but what I'm saying is, we might not have known, and I'm not here to say that, I, I don't know what the conversation with dispatch was, uh, but if we pass a call over to the state police, we generally consider that to be handled by them, and we don't duplicate the resources committed to a single call. I don't know if a phone, a return phone call is necessarily duplicating a resource though. Uh, I would agree, but if we don't know to return the phone call, because we don't necessarily understand the full bandwidth of the issue, I mean, again, I don't know what, what happened on the call, I can't defend that, I don't know.
Right.
But normally we would. Um, I'm sorry we didn't. But at the end of the day, it happened, I can't change that. Um, but generally, we, we emphasize follow-up with people. Um, that's one of the reasons why, why we do what we do, is to follow up with them.
I think there's just an increasing frustration, not, not just the board, just people in general, the public in general, of lack of presence or whatever the case may be, and maybe we shut ourselves in the foot by only going with twenty hours and not four hours. And that, and if we did, then, you know, we did, but.
Um, I got a, and I appreciate everything you guys do. Um, so, uh, I've also appreciate you taking up the, uh, monitor for the school zone, the camera. Um, I guess I had a, what, two questions on that, so, to me, it's always about, in like, uh, the twenty hours that we do get, whether it's ten hours or fifteen hours, it's really the quality of the hours, right? Because I understand that bad people are doing stupid things, you guys have to react to that. Specifically, making sure you're not around. But, uh, do you, is it, is there a cost to us for static deterrence, like when you guys have the speed?
No.
Thing?
Nope.
And that camera, whether it's on or not, that people know is there, it makes a huge difference. So I guess, um, again, I know you got limited resources, but I'm a big believer, I don't know if you are, in that static deterrence, when it's there, we get slower, people drive slowly because they see it, uh, when they know that's there. Maybe that's something that, um, because I appreciate definitely what you're doing, I understand the reaction, you guys react. As we're already at twenty hours, if whether we've got a protester, or we've got, you know, guys burning something they're not supposed to be burning on some road, you know, we might be at that limit. But, uh, maybe that's something that we could also better harness the relationship, and then reconsider, as Jason just said, maybe we should be considered with the resource there to maybe, you know, go back up to a higher number of hours out there, does that make sense?
It, it does, and just to explain why those resources cost, the, the static deterrence as you're referring to costs you nothing, is because they're actually grant funded. Uh, and so we have, uh, we receive roughly a quarter million dollars to provide traffic safety to the entire county. Uh, that's in partnership with the Broward Police Department, the Bellas Falls Police Department, the Dover Police Department. Uh, we have a full-time position that is responsible for the whole county, um, and that is federally funded, and so uh, I don't know if that was the person that you saw on Route Five, but if it was, well, they're federally funded, and so they have very specific rules, like FEMA has very specific rules. Uh, and so there are certain things they can do and cannot do, and while they'll respond to a life-for-lim type issue, and we'll work those details out. If it's a quality of life issue, then we'll say, we're going to have people respond from the place that they respond from because well, you've all worked with federal, federal grants.
And you gentlemen agree with the, my perception, I don't know, this, I'm not in the profession, that static deterrence does have an effect that it doesn't work?
Oh, absolutely, that's why we have them, uh, we actually run two, uh, two radar carts, we have four, um, four devices, the cameras as you're referring to, they're, uh, I forget what they're called, but they're basically a radar device that you've received some documentation for, uh, based on the places in town that we've, uh, placed them. Um, we, we want to buy more, uh, we actually want to get the, the speed feedback signs that we can mount to telephone poles uh, or to a street sign, uh, so you'll see those, uh, Bellas Falls has, uh, has them in and out, they leave them in single locations. What we're looking at is getting the battery-powered ones that we can move around to different places, so that you're not always expecting it in one spot. But if you want to commit the resources to a static location, say, the intersection of, uh, Gageville and, uh, I guess Route one twenty-one of Bellas Falls, um, you could do that. So there's all sorts of engineering things that we can do, uh, to that, and it does have, uh, a noticeable effect on traffic safety. Uh, we're huge advocates of it, uh, and every year, we can apply for the federal funds we do.
Thank you very much.
They, uh, we used to do forty hours when I was on the board office, when we first started up. It wasn't about a relationship between you and the downstairs office, and I think that's what I hear more complaints about is if Ally or somebody, you got no idea when they're coming, they're going. So it used to be that, that definitely would stop in almost every other day to see what was going on in town, and so I heard complaints or something, and you could pass them on. It'd be nice to go back to a little more of a, a relationship where you're checking in with the town hall every once in a while to get a feel of what's going on in town, because we're all kind of communicating with, with the office downstairs, or with Ally, or somebody else. We're all kinda communicating with, with the office downstairs or the valley or somebody else. And, uh, to give you an idea that what we're here.
Sure.
And then vice versa, you're informing us that, hey, you've just been the last ten hours trying to do something, you got no idea what you were doing really. Why you're doing it. I think it's just like to really improve a relationship for those twenty hours between the downstairs and the upstairs.
Uh, I'm wondering if that would make more sense to stop in. They used, or, or call, hey, where's the hotspots, where you been getting some complaints about, and that's where we'll concentrate some time on today. You know, or whatever, versus.
That's the complaint we hear all the time, so why are they out there instead of over here? It's not our job to tell you, but if we all of a sudden we have a lot of phone calls, why aren't you down there, then we can at least, you can give us an answer of why you're over there.
Uh, and that's some of the reason we actually, and Ally didn't have access to it, but we have the, the online activity reporting system, so you have immediate access to that information.
We, we know what we're doing, we don't know why you're doing it, and you don't know what, what she's trying to do.
Sure, and I don't have a, an issue with, with that relationship, I want that relationship to exist. Um, part of the, the difficulty we had last year was, we were splitting, uh, coverage in Westminster and Putney. Between multiple people because we were trying to cover everything with just what we had, we had gaps. Uh, we knew that, we, we communicated about that, I communicated with this board about that, um, but we've since filled those gaps, all my full-time positions are full. Um, and that includes those five FTEs, that includes, um, other things, we just added a deputy to the courthouse in Browderboro. Um, so we are in a lot better shape than agencies around us, uh, in terms of our full-time staffing. Where I'm hurting right now is my part-time staffing, I need seasonal help, but we're coming to the end of the season. So, that's, that's an issue for me to worry about, it doesn't affect the town, so to speak, um, but that does help us with other areas that, that we, uh, we do support. Um, but I have no issue with that relationship, we want relationships, uh, with our towns, uh, and part of, you've made reference to the meeting in New Haven. Uh, part of, uh, the discussion I had with New Haven is that the contracting model, I mean, it satisfies some of your needs, it does, I, I'm not here to dispute that. It doesn't really satisfy your needs. We talked about an ambulance, I assume you contracted Grace Cottage or some provider for that service, and you know that you have access to Grace Cod- or not Grace Cottage, Golden Cross. Uh, you have access to Golden Cross, uh, when you pick up the phone. Thing is, is that they get to bill insurance, so they don't have to charge, uh, charge a, a direct fee to the town for that service. You're helping pay for my cars, you're helping pay for my uniforms, you're helping pay for my gas, you're helping pay for the insurance, and what we tried to do was subsidize the town in those costs by doing the work on the interstate. So you'll see our deputies up there, we charge, uh, the, the construction companies more money. Because we're helping to offset those costs of cars and uniforms and training and whatnot, and really, we're trying to drive the direct personnel costs to the town, just that cost. Don't have the public plan yet, and this is somewhat on purpose, what I want to do is bring the towns together, or their representative, if you don't wanna warn a meeting. Uh, but bring the towns together and say, this is what we're proposing, basically, it's a model that's more holistic to everyone. That recognizes the benefits of regionalizing policing. While recognizing you have a budget that you need to be conscious of, that, that affects your taxpayers, and it needs to be reasonable to them. We can do it, uh, I like to use the analogy with, uh, highway garages, does every town need access to a grader? Absolutely. Does every town need to own a grader? I know a couple towns in Wyndham County where they're almost all dirt roads, and a couple towns where they are almost all paved roads. Now, I'm not here to, to criticize a town that has a grader that has more paved roads, I'm sure there are more uses for those, and that's beyond my bandwidth. But it, it explains the benefit of taking advantage of our regional, uh, partnerships with other communities, we had started some of that. What I call pilot project, uh, in my own mind, but we had started some of that project between Westminster and Putney. We're already building one, um, and so then it falls back to how do we govern that model, how do we fund that model? And those are the pieces where I wanna bring the towns in, uh, together to say, who would be interested in this model, once I have something I can. So I wanna provide a better policing service, uh, I, I think that the model itself is flawed, uh, and it's been flawed for, for many years. Uh, but this is what we know, and this is what we're comfortable with, and it, it's what we do each year at town meeting, and so this is why we keep doing it.
On all your, getting back to static deterrence, are all your vehicles allocated for? Can you, you have, uh, I know, I just happen to know, uh, some towns, border towns. They call a service vehicle and reposition that vehicle, by the time they're in twenty-four, forty-eight hours, and what I understand, and I've given it to you fairly well, but. I understand very effectively.
Uh, it, it can be, um, if managed correctly, uh, the problem I have right now is that I don't have enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in and, uh.
To work in software.
Yes. And I appreciate the feedback, I truly do, um, we'll, uh, we'll try to work out some of the kinks, I know that there was one question regarding the ATVs on the road and. How to report those, what did happen by the highway garage was how it should work. So we're working on the internal issue of why we didn't just report it as a call and ultimately follow up with the, the, uh, road foreman. Um, I don't have a good explanation for that right now, uh, but we'll have that one shortly.
Uh, any other discussion on the, for the sheriff's department?
Yeah, of course. Well, I, while back on, four weeks back, I, I was the guy that submitted the complaint against the. Uh, scrap yards on most of the road, and I was trying to get, trying to get notification to those people about town, existing town ordinances. Regarding salvage whatever, I don't know where it got lost in the shuffle, but. There was an issue with emails or whatever, but we didn't get a response, but you guys, the rest of my knowledge.
Well, when was it reported? August? So I know we had two, uh, what I'm gonna call dumping investigations, uh, one's been closed out, uh. I understand it correctly, it's not the same one you're talking about, the other one's still active, uh, with salvage yards, dumping complaints, I mean. Uh, this can bring in, uh, a variety of different entities, the health officer, bring in agency, natural resources, it could bring in a variety of different things. Um, and so some of those come with process, and some of those come with backlog. Um, to speak to your specific incident, I don't have the exact answer, other than it's an active investigation, I looked at it this afternoon, uh, and. Uh, we're continuing to work on it.
One more question is that people have been notified, or do they understand what the town, what decisions regarding salvage yards are?
Uh, with active investigations, we don't really comment on any of the details, um, because we try to use those. Uh, basically, the lack of public knowledge, uh, to our advantage.
Anything else for the sheriff's department at this time?
Thank you. Thank you. I do owe you an apology, I promised, uh, five of your data to the board, uh, I think last month. And I forgot to send, I was actually going to re- review it before coming here today, and I realized I never sent it, so I sent it to Ally, uh, this afternoon. Uh, you should have that, I'm happy to come back and speak to it.
I forwarded it to them because it was a hundred and six pages. Instead of putting it out for five years, it was a hundred and six pages, so they.
I might need to resend that then, um. We, part of it was Excel spreadsheets, which we processed the data, but then we also provided the raw data, which might explain why it's a hundred and six pages. Uh, but we'll give you the graphs and the, the tables, and if you want the raw data, I can give that to you as well, but, uh, the graphs and tables show. Alright, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Do we? Have gaps in coverage that we really need to fill somehow, like create a protocol for what to do when nobody responds? Or do we just wanna know? See what happens? Feel like there, feel like there's gaps, you know? I mean, I'm not saying that we have to cover the whole time. But if there's no, if state police are from the other end of the state.
That's, that state policeman came in from Chester. And the only leg we had to stand on, like I said, was he can't park here, but don't engage, and I found that out on my own, because that trooper wasn't gonna tell me that. I took it on myself to investigate some stuff with you.
Yeah, I mean, some things are not emerging, but, but at the same time. Wait, waiting four or five days till there's an officer available to go address something. Kind of misses your window of opportunity to make, uh, think about something.
I mean. If we've got a hold of somebody and they already know the name, they could have made her feel a little more relaxed, but I wouldn't even come. By just saying, oh yeah, we know this person, this is what's going on.
Right.
Just that, I'm trying to put a relationship where.
The dispatcher said, we're not comfortable with, with addressing protesters, and I said, well, I'm not dressing, I'm not comfortable with it either, but it's. Tax collection day, and then he's videotaping us.
Yeah.
You know, so she clearly said, tell them to move his car, whatever, I don't.
I don't have many suggestions.
A thirty-second phone call later that night when somebody was on, hey, how did you make out, I see that you had called, are things good, I think probably would have. At least you feel a lot better about it, you know what I mean, that you were at least heard, or we were at least heard.
Yes, and that, the ordinance, the junk ordinance things, I sent the ordinances, I did. I did, because, because Mark hadn't forwarded it to his deputy, the ordinance, he had just forwarded my email. And so Micah, I don't know if that was Mike or not. Okay, so I sent it to the, I sent, I sent. The junk ordinances to Mark Anderson. And Mark had, didn't forward them to his deputy, he just forwarded my email, not the attachment of the ordinances, okay? So this Mike Fisher, I think it's Micah, was not aware that we had a junk ordinance in town, and he just addressed the trash issue. So I.
That's the only question I was.
I resend it.
Did you send the guy out to, to inform these people, did you tell them, how the hell, how the hell is that translated into, you know? Me being too knowledgeable about his investigation.
Then I, and I resend it also.
Yeah, cause somewhere here in this thing, even just recently, you asked if, how we were making out with the, with the, uh. The two residences, and I don't know if they even responded to that.
Paul is in the office, and I don't mind. A couple, Paul is in the office a couple times a week, getting on that, because, because it bothers him, it, cause it bothers him, he doesn't like it, and I don't blame him.
Yeah, August, August twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Any word on these situations, so that was.
Me, he, I can see him saying, I don't wanna give you details, but we're still actively working on it, and the police. Did, I didn't get that, drove along, unless I came across it wrongly, I'm just asking if you delivered the message to the people. You know, on that road.
Well, and he's saying he's averaging thirty-three hours a week, and we only contract for twenty, and we're already complaining that if he's not here or not. We're not responding how we would like. We're gonna be even more upset when he's here less, cause that's exactly what's gonna happen.
The billing system, the, the log gives total hours.
Right.
But the bill.
Read.
Gives one hour.
You gotta read where that, where that person is. You've gotta read where they are.
Yeah, no, I, I, no, I understand that, I mean, it's. That's what I'm saying, though, so, you know, patrolled roadways for motor vehicle infractions, what the hell does that mean? How about you stop in this office and go, hey, where you been getting calls, oh, Pine Banks Roads, we've been getting, or Morse Brook, five calls. Okay, I'll go to.
One sheriff stopped in, and his name is Chris, and he's the one who sets up, but his job is to set up the things that Kevin was talking about. The, the speed limit signs, that's his job, that's his main job, anytime you need that, put it up, I said, how about you just sit on School Street for a second?
Yeah.
That kind of thing, that's the only sheriff that's ever stopped in, and I've been in that seat down there since the end of April.
Definitely, cause like I said, they used to hear at least, at least once or twice, we.
I don't care to have them committed micromanaging, that's not my, but it would be nice to know they're here.
Or at minimum give direction.
Right.
That, yeah, we've got five calls about this intersection, people not stopping, cutting people off, it's a good place to start.
What you guys are talking about is community police, back in the day, used to be the top on the beat, that knew every businessman, every store.
Yeah.
Whatever by name, and stopped them and made their presence known, originally we would, but what happened was. This guy was running out of money, ran out of force, so when they came back to us, but. Four years ago and said, listen, we gotta change, they make money by picking up speed. And unfortunately, we get less and less, because they keep changing, but every time they get a ticket, they get money for it, so they can make money off on a ticket. They don't wanna investigate problems because it doesn't.
Doesn't generate income.
Doesn't generate, that's the state police, so whenever we had like the catalytic converter, when they were stealing all that, they want nothing to do with it. That's the state police, because you're, they're just doing a lot of paperwork and not getting paid for it, and I'm like, that's. That was one of the things that changed, where before, they would patrol businesses at night to make sure nobody was breaking in. They're not doing any of that now, because it's just costing them that money.
I think there's just a, a lot of this communication breakdown, I think with better communication, we can. Solve a lot of this, but, and like I said, maybe twenty hours, it's just not enough, and if taxpayers are continually frustrated, then we'll go, go back to the fort. I mean. Is what it is, at this point.
But they gotta. The twenty hours, they are here, they're performing and doing a good job.
I agree.
Let's feel better, right now, we all, the percentage we have, we, we don't feel like we're getting really good twenty hours.
I agree, no, I agree.
And that's what's gotta change, that's what the voters, we're like, what, what's, what are they doing, you know?
Yeah.
We gotta get back to that, if they would at least correspond with the town office a little bit more than she could explain, anybody had a complaint about it, oh yeah, they were there. They're coming back and whatever. Most of them is always right, isn't that how it works?
Yep.
Not anymore.
And we had any discussion from the state police? We know their faith.
Not to my knowledge.
And do they come? Welcome to our world, and we have a call where it's somebody that's. Whatever the case might be, now we don't have anybody available.
Tell the sheriff's department, tell, tell sheriff's department, tell them to call the state police, state police.
Very well.
Yeah.
We thought when they took the building up there, we'd see a lot of, a lot of that.
Well, I, I mentioned this before, probably over a year ago, that there's, and Craig, Craig shot me down about insurance on this deal, but. There's a lot of small towns around us, mostly in New Hampshire, for whatever reason, and by small, I mean Langdon, Alstead. Well, Walpole, they're not necessarily small, but they're, you know, that have their own police force, they have their own guys. I, I'm not saying we wanna generate and have our own guys, but.
Look at their budget.
Well, you, you, you're paying.
They were looking to help because they were looking for warning.
I'll bet you your response time would be a lot better over there than it would be that we're getting right now.
Might wanna pursue, can we get a relationship?
I'm just throwing ideas, that's all.
You know, that, that might be the third call. If you can't get it near there, then it's all there.
I think right now, the problem you'd have, unless something changes, is they're not. They're the village of Bellis Falls Police Force, and to come here, I don't, they'd have to have, you'd have to have some kind of.
They offered this.
Agreement or whatever, I don't know how to word it, but. I'm not against what, I'm not against looking at any other option, but.
One, one thing about Alsted, Langdon, you see them on the interstate, you see them working with construction companies. They're generating revenue, not, I think they're very similar run with the way the sheriff's department is.
Alright, let's move on to, uh, we did cemetery deeds, that's all set, uh. Uh, our permission statement approval. Jim, do you wanna speak to this, or do you want? How do you wanna do that? I realize you're not the chair of that committee, but.
Not, uh, thank you. Um, well, just, I'm really here, there are questions, I know that. Katrina and I drafted the initial thing, and then it was discussed at the meeting. Two weeks for me, and then what I sent to you, um, and Chuck and Paul were both there. So, the, the basic gist of it was to try to lay out for. As I said at the, at the meeting. To let the public have a better understanding of how the system's supposed to work, and where the money is, and how it got where it is. Um, and quite honestly, to help keep it straight in our minds too, cause it gets confusing. And then the second part is the process that. Um, people should go through, which. Probably should have done a long time ago, but it's there now. And there were several people from the general public there, and they all had copies of it.
Uh, what's the board's pleasure on, uh? Mission statement, a few, or any discussion? Okay. I did not have anything to do with it.
Are you actually looking for a full look of what?
That's what we're looking for. Yes. Uh, mission, mission statement.
I don't have a mission statement.
Oh, yeah, same thing, yeah, to me, for any proceeds.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
On page two, what we're looking at?
One or two.
One is just like the minutes of the.
No.
No. It's a memo, it says memo at the top, Craig.
Yeah.
That's not any minute.
Policy listed below was approved on September. And that says background.
Page one is really just an explanation. For everyone, general public as well as to. Just how the ARPA money got to be part of the town budget and why. What, what, what the ramifications of that. Then page two is the process we want people to go through. And to explain to people that all we do is review them and make the recommendation as a committee. It's your board's decision what to spend money on.
Well, I had one question. How do we arrive at the wording standard allowance?
That's federal, uh, that's what the treasury called that option. That the LCP recommended and I think every town.
Good for me. When we move into the general. The general.
Yeah, and that's what allowed, basically it allowed the town. To treat all of the ARPA money as though it were lost revenue without going through any.
It's one, one reporting versus.
Yeah.
Going through.
But I think, well, it still has to be reported every quarter, you still have to tell them what you did with the money.
Yeah.
But you don't have to go through the long.
The long.
Our after process.
I think we have till January to report again.
So, I'll make it look, then a select board, we approve memo that was sent out by the ARPA committee to approve what they came up with. There's no title on.
Mission statement. It's not on it, it's on your.
Oh, okay.
It's on your, uh.
I'll second the adoption of the ARPA mission statement. September twenty first, two thousand twenty two, as presented before the select board.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the ARPA mission statement. As presented. Any discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dis opposed? One abstention? Thanks, motion passes.
Can I make a suggestion? Ignore it if you want, but just. I, I, I'm sorry, the, the confusion that comes from my not using the same terminology as mission statement. So if you just noted in the minute somewhere, the commission statement is this memo dated September twenty first.
That would make me feel bad.
Down the road.
Okay.
Best way to protect information is to let me know if it's on them, yeah.
Mission statement, I, I E, ARPA committee procedure.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Uh, so that completes C, we'll move on to, uh, D, ARPA fund proposals. Uh, I hold on one sec, so we have minutes from the last meeting, are we, we don't do anything with the ARPA minutes, maybe they're just for our own. Okay. Uh, I guess we have some projects ahead of us if somebody wants to, um, in front of us, if somebody wants to, uh. Speak to them.
So the fire department is looking for a washer, that's one of the proposals that I think you all have.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, uh, so washing gear for any of that, uh. Of course, we have to wash. Seems like more and more all the time, and when you put once a year and you wash it, and it takes days to dry. And it takes an hour and a half and people aren't down there all the time, so it takes a long time to wash you, um, and take care of the stuff, so. Can't send it home to these people to wash, you're gonna just destroy it by normal washing machine. Uh, anyways, and, and then you don't necessarily want to send it home depending on what the situation was that they were in. So there's a proposal estimate for the installation. Uh, I believe on your proposal has the washing machine, the installation cost, but there and the total. Um, the dryer, I just think like the price, um, the way it was going in lower, so. The dryer may have prices on there, but I don't think there's anything that I don't want.
How do you dry them now, if you don't mind that?
Hang them up. Yeah, I mean, you can't, if you put them in a clothes dryer, you gotta have it on real low heat, so, yeah. They do have dryers that are mainly PVC, they put a mower in them and it just air dries them.
Motion to, uh. Accept the proposal on the ARPA committee. Uh, for the procurement of fire gear washing machine, which will include. One fire gear washing machine. Installation cost of approximately fifteen hundred ninety dollars, the machine, as quoted here by this proposal. Uh, seven thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars. Uh, for a total, um, allocation of ARPA funds. Nine thousand four hundred twelve dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll second.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded for approval. From the firehouse and ARPA committee for washing machine and installation. Any discussion at this time? Seeing. Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Before we move on, can I ask a quick question, Jim? But hypothetically, this proposal nine thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, let's say actual cost ends up being eight thousand dollars. Is it?
You could have made the motion not to exceed that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking for my own. Where, knowing, knowing, because you're, you only will get the eight thousand. Not the nine thousand four hundred and twelve and have fourteen hundred dollars and twelve left over.
Right, I get, no, I'm.
Saying that.
Gets the money, the bill comes into the town, I.
The invoice comes in.
Actual invoice.
And if it exceeds what you've approved, then we put, put it aside.
Yes, sir.
This is a comprehensive, uh, Keith's committed comprehensive, uh.
Yeah.
Providence here, so.
I'm just curious the procedure of how exactly.
If the bill, if the invoice came in at eighty-four hundred, there would be a thousand dollars more left in those funds in the fifth of town health.
Right.
You wouldn't have spent it. If we go out and was gonna ask, and we did normally would say not to exceed a dollar. But in this case, they were actually concrete prices handed to us. So we had to do it the right way.
Well, honestly, in today's day and age, not to exceed that price could change. Like tomorrow, you know, like who, who really knows, so. Anyways, that's just from my own, I, I was just curious how like.
Thank you. Okay, I believe you have an invoice for our.
Yeah.
Installation of the generator, which did go over. But I think it was sixteen dollars.
Sixteen dollars?
But it was a little over what was.
Correct, sixteen dollars over. What was that?
Who's installing, is it that company that you buy the washing machine from?
No. No, that'll just come from, I think that's the part I can say.
They do it, okay.
They'll, they'll just supply the washers and will.
So what, what do we do with it? I mean, sixteen dollars, I can't imagine anybody's nuts probably over sixteen dollars, but what do you do if it is over?
I don't know, I submitted the bill to.
I mean, you know what I mean, those. Minimal amount, oh, you know, I wouldn't worry about minimal amount, but if it was. Hundreds and hundreds of dollars over, then what do you have to re, would you have to re, uh. Submit to the board for that, or?
We could, you put it in general, we can actually turn around and go back, fire the funds, if that's what. That's what they do the audit at the end of the year, they come out and go off.
Right now, we've approved that exact number based on the exact.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
What else, what else we have for, um, ARPA?
I think we have to approve the invoice for it to get paid. For the installation of that generator.
Well, didn't we just do that?
No.
No, we did the.
That was the washer.
Where did we generate?
Yeah, I don't have any, I don't have either.
No, there's no one here. Three thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Correct one, right? Three thousand. Want to see it?
Yeah.
It's just coming from the.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was part of what was previously approved.
I'll get it submitted, approved the payment of the invoice for the installation. The generator, um. Uh, which included, uh, labor and, uh, equipment. Um. And the, uh. Clear list of items on the invoice. Um, number two eight three five dated six zero six. Uh, twenty-two for a total amount of three thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars and four cents.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve the invoice for the generator installation as presented. Uh, any discussion?
Is this the one with the sixteen dollars over?
That believed to be the estimate that came along with that as well, the price of the generator and the installation.
Yeah.
I think the sixteen dollars.
The sixteen dollars short coming out of that fund. Good question, but where, where the sixteen dollars technically come from?
I think it comes very back, I know, I think it will come right out of that, that same ARPA fund.
When the town adopted the standard allowance and moved that money into the town budget. You're spending that money just like you do any other part of the town budget in the bureau. If this bill came in a little bit over the estimate that you approved last time.
Right.
But this is the one we're asking to prove it, so you're right. Right, we pay this, it would come out of. Yeah. I'm comfortable with it.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, what else do we have for ARPA approval, ARPA fund proposals at this time?
So. I submitted one for a bridge deck over the East Putney Brook, it's a bridge that we own. That we will not get any help from the state. It's, uh, it's a wooden deck bridge that would be replaced with a cement deck that would. Outlast any of us. Um, I got. Free contractors to work at it, I got, uh. Gold River Bridge, Renault and the Bricky, and. The Bricky wasn't interested, Gold River Bridge came in at a hundred and nineteen thousand and change and. Um, Renault came in a hundred thousand. The road would be closed for one day, it'd be a pretty bad deck, it's land in the place. Is able to do all the work to prep for it without closing the. Existing bridge. The reason I'm asking ARPA for this is because we've got the Goldies Bridge. That needs to be paved and it needs a, a membrane put on it. And the East Putney Brook Bridge, which is also known as the Bones Campy Bridge right there. By the intersection of Patch Road and Westminster Road. Is gonna need replacement, and if you look at the bridge reports that I gave Jason earlier. It shows that they're gonna be piggybacked almost the same time as the bridge in Gageville. And you don't have anywhere near enough money saved to take care of all this. So. Um, something has to be done with this bridge deck sooner than later. Um. So I just felt this was a good way to take care of it.
Any concerns from the ARPA advisory team? That has been put us out of the lane for its qualifying for ARPA?
There's, there was a discussion, no, no concern.
It was approved by the. But stopping was from doing any briefly. Why can't we do these bridges enough? We own this bridge, we get no state help, no state funding, that's nothing, that's what's.
We can use ARPA funds, if we had state funding for a bridge, we can use ARPA funds to help pay for our fortune over to. We can use ARPA funds for any bridge, we can use ARPA funds for all the bridges. Just whether we want to or not.
And the, um. ARPA committee, um, just their opinion unanimously believes, uh, that we should, uh. Prove this, uh, expensive.
We approve a hundred thousand, though?
Therefore, motion, uh, based, um, under the ARPA fund. That, uh, Westminster Select Board approved. The, uh, thank you. Um, submission from Reno, Reno Rogers. Uh, for repair, excuse me, removing existing wood deck and being replaced and recast concrete deck. Bear caps installed with rail, crew volunteers, equipment and labor, essentially replacing this bridge. Um, for East Putney Brook Road. Uh, total expenditure not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve, uh, funds for one, not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for. East Putney Brook Road Bridge Deck Replacement. Any this, uh, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it.
Will I have that, please? Thank you. You can have it back if you like.
No, no, uh, East Putney, South Valley Road, East Putney. Um, often the Westminster. So I also put in a request. For a. Rehead, it's a saw that mounts to a tractor where the brush hog is now. And. What that's for is to trim back brush and, and tree limbs. And especially with the ice storms and things you've been having where the roads are just inundated with trees bent over and. Um. You know, with, with ice. If. That happened, we had to open the roads up, this would be the only way to do it, we wouldn't send guys out with chainsaws trying to cut. Spring poles, somebody would get hurt, but it would also. It'd also be used for maintenance to, as I said, trim the, trim the, uh, roadside back where now we'd have somebody standing under a motor bucket. With a pole saw, from the back of the dump truck. And go down the road and they try to trim the tree limbs where this will be a little. Safer and more efficient. Uh, it looked up, like up to a six inch length. Um, the town Plymouth has one, I went up there, I looked at it, used it. Talked to them, they've had it for a couple of years now. Uh, still has the same blades on it. Use it all the time, they use it on all their fast flow roads also. And keep them open, um. But yeah, first with no maintenance, but what they normally did with three guys with chainsaws, now they do it with one guy. So. Pretty good, considering. We're, we're down a couple of guys, so. And. The newest price from Champlain Valley Equipment. Came in this afternoon, um, what was that, twenty-four?
Twenty-seven, four hundred.
And that's the, that's the cheapest one. I asked for updated ones.
Oh, so the one that was twenty-eight and lowered to twenty-seven, four?
Yeah.
And then what is this other one, it's twenty-seven, five?
You got one from Cham, you got two from Champlain.
Yeah, this is from, I can't believe that the state. Yeah, this is from, I can't believe that the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so it's still a hundred dollars. A hundred dollars more.
That one is a hundred dollars more than, than Champlain. And that's, that's uh, over in New York. Salem, Salem Prime Supply. So, so you've got three prices there and, and uh, Champlain Equipment being the cheapest one.
This is going right on, we lost the blueprint.
Uh, we haven't had that feedback in five years. So long as, it's orange now. So yes, it goes right on, it's a quick detach thing, where you take the grass mower off and put this on it and.
And this has been through ARPA, too?
Yes.
I'll make a motion then that we uh. Authorized up to twenty-seven thousand four hundred to pursue uh, buying from Champlain Valley. A sixty-nine inch saw blade head that attaches to uh. Back of.
Roadside mower, roadside.
I'm gonna second that, I did have a question, I'm just. Something to do with on this stuff. Uh. You need training on this thing, the guys need to be trained on this?
Yeah, you want me to turn to somebody who's worried.
Just throw them into the deep end.
Any, no, any, and anybody that would run this, I talk with me. The planner. And they use the plonuts. So, um.
I'm asking you if you know the stuff.
Yeah.
To me, um, cause I've read a little bit about it when you submitted it. Um, these things firework, can firework like rocks and stuff, right?
Uh, no, they better not be, because they better not be mowing that close to the ground.
But it does happen.
This will be, no, this will be up mowing tree limbs.
Okay.
Yeah.
The only thing is that the tree limbs fall on the ground. So, so even though the machine there cutting, somebody there to make sure that the branches and.
Well, right, if you're in a situation where you need to be picking up brush, there'd be somebody. Going along behind it, a weights behind it.
At least pulling the brush out of the road.
But yeah, that would be the thing, once. We purchase it from them, they'll come and they'll. Show everybody how to use it correctly and.
But, but it's always great.
Do their sharp little.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like I said, they've had plonuts on theirs for over a year, they haven't done anything. Couple of years, so.
Thank you, I seconded. Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve. The use of ARPA funds for a three-blade brush saw for the highway department. Not to exceed, what was the number, twenty-seven thousand four hundred?
One last quick, well, discussion, is this something that you could share within Willie Town, or is it just for us?
Uh, no, because you would have to have the specific equipment to hook it to, unless you wanted to let them use our tractor, which I. I don't know.
No, I just, you know, anything.
Yeah.
It's so little used, sometimes you wonder about trading off or doing something like that.
Yeah.
This is something we're gonna use like.
Well. Well, potentially, uh, we've got a couple of guys right now that are semi-retired. That are helping us out, filling in some of the blanks. And I'd love to be able to take somebody like that and train them to be able to do that. A couple of days a week. On one end, and have the other one on the other end. We're not paying them any benefits, we're not. You know, so you potentially could have somebody in it all the time. At fairly low cost.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? As have it, motion carries. Any other ARPA fund proposals at this time? Thank you guys, thank you Jim for the.
There was one, I need to take off, I just give you guys a heads up, uh, between a proposed and the meeting, ask the question in the meeting, we didn't know the answer to. Um, and jump in if I get this wrong, then maybe Ally knows some of the answers. Could, if you had a project, like the bridges Chuck was talking about, that was gonna come down the road. And. You wanna put some money in it, but. You know well how these things go, and all of a sudden, six months is two years, and you're out there. Could that money be put in a fund? We were told in the VLCT seminar training that, for example, a rainy day fund is not an allowed. Expense for this stuff. The question was, would a dedicated fund like the bridge fund be able to take money? And. I, I brought up, we should find that out, I realized when I read the limits today that I was volunteering to do that. Uh. So what I've done is, I've sent the message. Uh, to VLCT, the person who provided all that training and stuff, and asked her the question. Of.
When I, when I first came on, I thought the advice from. These folks with ARPA was to say, you kinda wanna not be blowing the money.
Right.
And in case something happens. You're ready, that we're not having to borrow money, but.
Well, it was mentioned too, from, I think it was Wyndham Regional about. Uh. I use the term earmark, that might not be the right term, but. Funds for grant matches.
Right.
Yeah.
To, so where.
So I don't know where you would put it, for any day fund, just earmark, I don't know, but.
Well, if you just stays, could just stay.
Could stay there.
Yeah.
But, because at the end of the day. Um, the end of twenty twenty-six. When this, when this program ends, the money's supposed to be expended. I understood, and I'm not an attorney or an accountant, but my understanding is that. Like taking that money into the, using the standard allowance. You defederalize the money in their terminology. Which means that if there's left money left at the end of the day, it's left as local money in the town's budget, it's not federal money that goes back. And you can use it to match other federal funds, which is an unusual thing.
Right.
Um. So my, my message that I sent to Katie Buckley at VLCT today was simply saying. Theoretically, if we would have put a hundred thousand dollars into a bridge fund. Using ARPA money, and then it didn't get spent until this program ended, are we okay or not? So that you'd have that advice back from them. And we'll see what they go.
Jim, thank you for all your. Uh, consideration, excellent work.
At the end of the day, it's your decision, so we're trying to be careful about the advice we can get.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Anything else for the ARPA? Fund proposals? Uh, so. We did uh, road foreman's report when Ally was downstairs.
We did all of the delivery.
Wasn't a whole lot.
Well, I just didn't, I just didn't put anything on for a manager's report, because I just saw you Monday. We just saw you last Monday, but the, in, in the interim. We've had, the furnace is no good.
I was gonna ask.
Furnace is junk, Sheldon showed up, Cole showed up. Um.
Hot water heater as well.
Water, it's, it's, yep, it's corroded, Sheldon had said it'd been corroded for a while, but it wasn't getting any worse, wasn't getting any better, but while we were doing it to do the whole thing. Cole was gonna get us a estimate, I called two other local companies for estimates, just so we're not.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a lot of money, I'm sure, and it. We should have the estimates there, um, I hadn't, as of getting here tonight at quarter six, I hadn't heard anything from the other two companies yet.
I'm one of them.
Thank you, everybody.
Certainly not gonna fix itself, so.
So, and, I mean. Uh, it, it's, it was leaking for a while.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, I noticed it was leaking when we switched fuel providers over a month ago.
So. I didn't, I've never, I've never been in that room, and I, I couldn't go without being in it again, so.
It's not that bad, it's not as bad as I thought it would be.
That's all, but that's all I had, cause I could.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you. Uh, executive session if needed, do we have the need for that?
Um. Sure, I'd like to make a motion. That the select board enter executive session for consideration of the appointment of an intern. Select board members to round out the fifth person that's required by statute. Uh, in order to uh, bridge um, the board to the uh, next election, which is coming up quickly. Uh, on March, in March of two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, motion has been made and seconded to enter an executive session. For consideration of. A fifth board member.
I have a motion, you, you want to say whether the decision will be made or not?
Very good point, um, a decision could be made, excellent point.
And it could be made. Could be made.
Yes.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, was opposed. As have it. Um, we'll do that after uh, other business. Uh, boards, committees, and commissions. Saying nothing, we'll move on to uh, other business. Is there any other business at this time? Paul, you got nothing?
I got it.
You must have something.
Sure.
All right.
Suggested, if I do, you know. If we participate in a recycling program and whatnot, I think it would be handy to ask. The contractor, put out a, some sort of a memo maybe in the town newspaper or whatever. What's acceptable recycling material, you know, what's good and what's not, which you can put in recycling or. I mean, I, you know.
Be a good reminder.
Best, best guess for me, but.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of people that don't really understand. What you should be throwing in a recycle bin and whatnot.
I can tell you firsthand from doing some caretaking, when people come here. They don't understand it either, cause I have to pick through it and take out stuff that's not. Supposed to be in there.
It's been a while since we've had Joe here, wouldn't be a bad idea to have.
Good idea.
Let Joe come back and just, yeah, and update on how everything's going.
Uh-huh, so curious, is anyone really, with town, really follow, follow the waste painting of this? What, I mean, where is this stuff going?
Joe, that's a good question, if we get Joe to come here, that would be exactly the question we asked. It, you know, it's been quite a while, and the last time he was saying how expensive it was, he was bringing.
It's been well over a year.
Yeah, and then the price of fuel, it's trucked over to the year and year, so I'd be curious what is going on.
Just curious about the, okay.
And where we're heading, you know, like. We're gonna be working on our budget pretty soon for the next year, of course, the state's getting more restrictive all the time and everything.
I think they have, he has a three-year contract, we'd be, we have two left on it.
I'd like to get the guys from the, and gals from the transfer station to in here to give us an update on too, on. What we can and can be throwing out there. Yeah, and also, as you just said, point out, what days can we actually make, you know, those special deliveries for old paint and. Certain things that are, that would be a great idea.
Larry.
Yeah.
Larry White.
You know, while we're. Check, see, we still have a contract with Ritter, so we still bring stuff from Ritter.
I think, I think they don't do anything really local anymore with that, with like, you know, the paint cans and stuff, wasn't that, um.
Last I knew, that was.
Wasn't that all Ritter?
I think, I thought so, and it was only a month a year, or something like that.
Well, you see, most of that, whatever town does a month's a year.
Well, we've had a lot of painting in town and, and uh, improvements that have been done, so I think, you know, probably gonna just. Get a notice out there, see. That place take this stuff, cause I've been seeing stuff on these little areas like, what is that, uh, up by the bridge there, if you head toward Putney. Someone just leaves stuff there all the time.
Yeah.
Oh, Big Red Road, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we fix that up.
Peter Golick, who comes, he's always down on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd go thirty yard dumpster, you pay for it every, most of the year.
While we're on boards, committees, and committees, or other business, that's a good thing to. Remind people that when they bring stuff down to the edge of their, of the road. That's their responsibility, that's their trash, if you wanna put it in your driveway, so, so, so be it, but when you bring it to the end of the road, or for a turnaround, or to whatever. It's still ultimately your trash at the end of the day.
I put several articles in the newspaper, the local. Gazette about that, and that's what it says, is. That just because it's free and you put it beside the road isn't removing from responsibility.
Yep.
Um, but it doesn't, doesn't amount to anything, Westminster West right now, there's a. Uh, sign that says no dumping, and right underneath it, there's a couch and a bureau. So. It's a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, so even if we caught, it's cheaper to just pay the two hundred and fifty dollar fine than it is to take it somewhere and get rid of it.
They had dumped, they said it, they told them, they were leaving.
Well, yeah, right, so it's free, it's got a sign on it, so.
Yeah.
Transfer station is Rockingham operated, I remember I had, I had a ticket, whatever, sticker for thirty-five bucks, or whatever it was, we don't, we don't sell a ticket.
No, they, no, no, we don't do that anyway, you have to go to Rockingham Town Court, or you have to, you can do it right at the transfer station itself. It's free to Bellas Falls, Rockingham, any other one, they don't care who you weigh from, it's seventy-five bucks for a stomach. And two fifty per bag, free recycling. On a note for the.
For for Blackberry.
Yeah. The, um, uh. Chuck, um, if I could, uh, when I was out back.
Here?
Yeah, when I was out back going down into the furnace room there, there's stuff under the stairs. That's the highway department would get rid of, would be great, it's um, old, um, couple old pallets. Under there.
There's some stuff under there that's used to cover up your.
Is that what that is?
Air conditioner everywhere.
There's signs under there and stuff?
Yeah.
I don't know what signs are, but I believe the covers for your air conditioning unit are underneath there that every winter.
Oh, we're not.
Gets a cover on.
I didn't have my glasses on.
Um.
All right, that's it, okay, that's all.
So, my question is, um, would it be possible to, to change other town ordinance? Where we actually put some teeth in this, so people throwing stuff beside the road. You're real fine, it's gonna cost you some serious money. If you're throwing stuff over the bank and you get caught. Versus a slap on the wrist.
Just don't ask the sheriff to bomb the delivery.
I think you'd have to make, you'd have to make an ordinance.
Well, that's what.
Signage and uh, pass it. I guess we still can catch the person doing it or somehow.
We gotta catch them, we, we've done that, we've had videos we sent in, and I've never heard anything back, uh. But playing number video, guy shoveling stuff over, inside of his truck on Elmwood Hill Road. But. Dead to rights.
I had something else too, I'm sorry folks, um. There's a rat problem in Gageville. I've had numerous calls.
Rat.
Rat. Rats, um, but there's a fellow up on the hill, I'm not gonna say his name. Uh, but he has taken upon himself to trap and shoot, sits out with a pellet gun on his property. He killed twenty-eight this week. Another residence down by Cooperman, the, the factory there. That whole section is being affected, and I said. The only thing I can tell you is I contacted the state. If you poison, you're taking the risk that you're gonna kill an owl, a bird of prey of some sort. We suggest that you talk to your neighbors and get the food. Source out, meaning bird feeders, chicken feed, all that garbage. All of it, and start trapping your compost, all of it. You've got to be aware and trap and, um, but that, that's not a whole lot, I have no teeth. Um, for the state. People just have to. Take care of their, their, yeah, be responsible, be responsible. But it is a problem.
Engagement.
Engagement.
Yeah.
When I grew up. We just call them river rats. And they were bad, but that was back when the sewer was going into the river. That's about a long time.
Yeah, I guess there's a couple of people that, that have chickens.
Fairly active chicken and turkey.
Yes, and. Yeah.
Thick, right.
And there was a lady that was. Feeding.
Is that what they are?
I didn't look at them.
You want an example, I'll bring one.
Right. They're.
No, that frag is blown up.
They're, 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 I saw pictures, some of them were this big, from the fellow that was trapping them, some were this big. Hattie had one on her porch, that, cause she was feeding chickens, she stopped feeding the chickens, something was huge. And she get one good in her house that was a little smaller, but it was still a rat. I mean, they breed.
Yeah.
And breed, and breed.
There's a reason.
Yeah, they're better, they're almost more efficient than rabbits.
Yes.
There you go.
We're up on a dairy farm, we have a rat problem.
All right, uh, any other business at this time, or comments or anything else? Thank you all for, uh. Yeah, appreciate it. This time we will enter into executive.